Good evening, everyone. Want to call our meeting to order this evening, the Town of Beekman Zoning Board of Appeals, October 5th, 2023. At this time, if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Couple of housekeeping items before we begin. Our items on the agenda this evening. Behind you, to your left, you'll notice an exit. And then immediately in front of you, the second exit. And then all the way in the back of the room, behind you will be another exit. Also, behind you, to your left, the restrooms are available for your convenience. So tonight, we have two items on our agenda for the public hearing. First one being the Quigley Pool House, seeking an area variance on 11 Lindsay Lane, grid number 6759-00-990432, Zone R45. The applicant is seeking an area variance under Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B of the Town Code, which requires a minimum rear yard setback of 35 feet. The applicant has proposed 4 feet 6 inches and is requesting a variance for the remaining 30 feet 4 inches. Item number 2 on our agenda, Casey Carport, on 49 Riley Road, grid number 6660-00-242047, Zone R90. The applicant is seeking an area variance under Section 155, 26A, Subset 1, Subset D, Subset 1, which requires accessory structures to not exceed 25% of the principal structure. The principal structure is 2,498 square feet. Therefore, the accessory structure shall be 624 square feet or less. The applicant has proposed 1,050 square feet structure and is requesting a variance for the additional 426 feet. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to review and accept the minutes of last month's meeting.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to open tonight's public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So the applicant for the Quigley Pool House, are you in the room this evening? Hi. Great. You can come up to the...
This is a continuation. This is the next one. This is the next one. Yeah, my name is Joanne Quigley. I reside at 11 Lindsay Lane, and I'm here asking for a variance in order for us to build a structure in our yard. We're asking for a variance of 18 feet rather than the, which shows on the updated survey that we submitted for this meeting.
So we have the plans that are submitted by Terry Collins, which are dated September 8th of 2023. So it's a fairly recent submittal. This is a continuation from, I believe, you know, last month as well.
Yes.
One of the things that is not clear on this plan, which maybe you can provide some clarity on or some additional information, is the exact location of the septic field. Right now, on this plan, it shows from the furthest point about 29 feet and an additional 23 and 1/2 feet from an approximate location of the SSDS field.
Yes, that field is the approximate distance from the gravel pad where the structure will be located. So the leach field is there at 29 feet and then at 23.5 at those two different points.
The board feels and the board believes that approximations aren't, we don't have enough information. We don't know exactly where the field is. These are approximate locations. So the challenge that we're having is if you're off by a foot, you're off by a mile. And there is a septic tank cleanout just slightly to the left of the brick patio based on the renderings that you have here. So it's not too difficult to put a, some sort of tubing, you know, structure or with some dye and really find out exactly where the exact, the closest point is and then get that exact location onto the, onto the plan and then we can review it at that point. To make decisions based on approximations, and again, you're off by a foot, you're off by a mile. So we're having a little bit of a difficulty in, in moving forward, again, based on approximate locations.
So if I'm clear, you need the exact distance from where the proposed structure will be and the leach field, as well as the cleanout for the septic.
No, no, the cleanout, we're good with. He was just saying from the cleanout, you could put a dye in and where it comes up in the field first will give you the closest, closest pipe on the field to tell you exactly how far away you're going to be. The approximation leaves us a little exposed, only because if somebody comes in before us or the planning board with another proposal in between the pool house and the field and we looked at something that said it was approximately 29 feet and let's say it was off by 10 feet and then somebody says, who gave them the okay on that eight years ago? And they go back and look at this and said, who okayed that on an approximate guess? And that's where we get in trouble. So yeah, I mean, if, who was it that did this one?
Terry.
Bergendorf.
Yeah.
Okay. And Collins, yep. If they didn't put approximate on there and they were willing to put their stamp on and say, yep, that's exactly where it is, then we have somebody to hang our hat on if something goes south, you know? So it's just limited exposure and information is just key to us on this one.
Okay. I guess from my own clarity, what is the distance? I know it's 35 feet from the rear property line. What's the distance from the septic?
10 feet. 10 feet to the structure. Yeah, I had to ask the engineer that this morning and they told me they have to have a minimum of 10 feet between the proposed structure and the septic field.
Okay, so just so, again, so I'm clear, the approximate of 29 feet is not clear enough for the 10-foot setback?
Well, it's approximately 29 feet. It could be 9. We don't know that.
Yeah, nobody said, if the engineer was willing to say plus or minus 2 inches or, you know, plus or minus, you know, 20 feet, you know, the approximate just kind of throws us in the exposure and not him.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
No problem. Joy, to table this, that information's gotten.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll table this, we'll keep the discussion open and we'll, we'll table this until that information is made clear to us, again, from the engineering firm or whomever you're using. That can be in the next meeting in November or December, whenever you have that information ready. But we'll keep this session continuous and open for you to provide that information to the board.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions that the board needs me to answer?
I think you did pretty good between last one and this one. You really given a lot of good information.
Did the person that put in the septic answer that question?
Yeah, anybody who, you know...
The person that put in the septic system, I don't know if you guys had...
Would you know, would you know how old the septic system is?
The house was built in 2005, so the septic system was, was put in at that time.
Okay.
I should be able to find it.
Yeah.
2005, absolutely.
The board, the board...
It was recommended at the last meeting that I contact the Department of Health, which I did, and their schematics are sketchy at best because it's all hand drawn.
Yeah.
So it, someone needed to walk the land in order to, you know, really determine what the thing was.
Yeah, we saw the Department of Health sketches and renderings and again, they're, they're giving us approximates. If, again, I'm, you know, I'm thinking out loud here, if on this, on this specific plan it said approximate within 2 to 3 inches, within 2 to 3 feet, within, you know, obviously the, the smaller that margin of error is, the better it is for you. The wider the margin of error is, you know, puts you in a little bit, you know, more of a predicament. But again, the, the challenge that the board is having, again, based on Town Code, is that word approximate and there's no variance or margin of error with that, with that approximation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
So...
So did the Department of Health sketch have a, an expansion area or no? I don't know, it's 75?
Reserve field?
Yeah.
I'd be lying. I haven't seen this part.
Back in 75, I don't know if they...
2005 is when the house was built.
This house was 2005, yeah. They should have it.
Did you build that?
I didn't see it.
Was the house existing when you, or did you build it?
No, the block is new, so the survey that's on file with the town and the county is actually a proposed property map of the entire block. This survey would be the first updated survey for that property.
Yeah, want to make a motion to table it tonight?
Yeah, yeah. Want to make a motion to table this discussion until, is 30 days sufficient for you or will you need 60?
Let's try 30. I mean, I can always ask for the...
Okay, okay. Nope, that's fine with us, absolutely. So make a motion to table this discussion for the Quigley Pool House?
Second.
Any second?
Yep.
All in favor?
If there's anybody from the public.
We have the public on the first meeting, so everything was just, just open until this meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 2 on our agenda, Casey Carport, again at 49 Riley Road, grid number 6660-00-242047, Zone R90. The applicant is seeking an area variance under Section 155, 26A, 1D1, which requires an accessory structure to not exceed 25% of the principal. The principal structure is 2,498 square feet, therefore the accessory structure shall be 624 square feet or less. The applicant has proposed 1,050 square feet structure and is requesting a variance for the additional 426 square feet. And I see that the applicant is at the podium. Thank you. Could you please state your name and your address for the record, please?
Frank and Denise Casey, 49 Riley Road.
Tell us a little bit about your project, please.
This is supposed to be a garage, three-car garage. You have five drivers in our family and there's not enough room in the driveway and Jaffe always car around. So the fix is to put a garage in so that we can get some of the cars out of the driveway.
Go through the five questions and then we'll give them questions.
Yeah. Yeah.
Frank, do you have your application up there with the five questions?
I have it.
All right. So what we'll do, just so we can read them into the record, you guys, if you could just read the questions and then just give your answer or elaborate on any answers you think of, that'd be great.
I'm gonna read each question.
Each question. I'm sorry, we do it to everybody.
One, the desire of change produced in the character of the neighborhood, the children of the neighborhood, and the nearby properties we create by granting the merits. I'm assuming that means something ugly and obnoxious?
You got it.
Can the desired result be achieved by some other means and grants and merits? No, because our house is so small that we can't build much bigger than a shed is the variance substantial. And I don't think so, but apparently it might be. I don't know if we consider it substantial. Will the variance have adverse effect of impact on the physical environment conditions when you have a residential? No.
There's other houses that may have as much of a more garage. My next one here is a four-car garage.
Yep.
Basically the same four houses.
Do you allege hardship self-created? No, I don't think so. I mean, you have to...
That's okay. Okay. We're ready to open it to the board?
Yeah. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. I'd like to know what type of structure this is. It looks like it's just a framing type of garage. Is there, you know, is it a solid walls around the exterior?
It's metal.
It's a metal? What, is one of those industrial type of metals, like the ones you see on 55?
It's, it's, it's a regular, it's not a rounded structure. It's, it looks like a regular garage. Two garage doors.
Is it secure to the ground?
Yeah, so it will have a concrete pad.
Okay.
And basically they put a notch in the pad and a steel structure goes well and it's fixed to the concrete and the side comes down past the concrete.
Okay. And there's no, there's ventilation, storage area in it, what, besides cars?
Yeah, it's basically a three-car garage. It's a single, single story.
I do have a question as well. How tall is it compared to your home? Like, will it be over the regular roof in your home?
It has a 12 on the side wall and I think the pitch is a 4 on 12.
To the peak? What, you know what the measure? Should be in, in the plans.
15 feet to the highest point of the set.
Okay. Yeah, your house is well over that.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
These are prefabricated, carport-style garages?
They, basically they create what side you're asking for. So they pre-make it, they weld and they bring it outside and then they erect it and stood up wall by wall and then it's sheeted on the outside.
It's like a prefab garage.
Yeah, so it's a three-car garage. Are the three cars going to be side by side or are they going to go...
The three doors will face the garage, face the road.
Yeah. So you don't have to pull in all the way in the back and make room for the other car to come in behind it and then make room? It's, it's going to be wider than it is the...
The end will face the road and you'll be able to pull it with the three doors.
Need to each...
Is there any intentions down the road of plumbing or electric or living space out of that?
No, no living space. We will definitely run electric for lights and stuff.
No plumbing?
No.
Okay.
That property is on the pitch to a street.
Okay. How did you come up with 1,050 square feet for three cars?
Basically enough room for each car and a work bench in front across the building.
Yeah.
From the actual garage. I think, I think they average cars anywhere from 16 to 17 feet long. So by the time you pull into the garage, you have a foot or two behind it and like a four-foot bench in front. That's pretty much what we came up with.
Yeah, got to be able to open the doors while you have them in there.
Yeah.
All right. Now on to, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. What I'm looking at, there doesn't seem to be a home next to you. In other words, looking towards the...
We're a corner lot.
Okay, okay. So all of these are woods, so...
So there's only one, one neighborhood that's touching our backyard. Our next, our next neighbor I think is a 12 or 13 acre something else, an easier than far.
Of their own, okay. Right?
But your property on that side does slope down.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there is a question because we have steep slope laws or rules on the zoning and, and the wetland zoning also. So there's some concern. Anything over 15 degrees and looking at the parcel map online, the Duchess County parcel, they actually give you the wetland and the stream in there. And I think they might give slopes. It, it looks like you're, I think...
We're roughly, I think, from where the garage was sit.
Yep.
About 170 feet.
Right.
Before the bridge where the stream runs through at the bottom.
Right. So given the 75-foot setback and then the distance from the house gives us how far you are from the stream?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's probably 175 feet from where the garage is to the stream. It's pretty far away.
Okay. And that slope, that angle, because I know...
So if you look at the front of the house where the driveway is, once you get past the driveway, it drops all steeper. So that's why we wanted to keep the building close to the house.
Close, yeah. Yeah, all right. I'm looking at it on the parcel online and it looks like you're at about 11% right there, which puts you in a fine spot. But that's the hard part with, I know I was talking with your wife about the, the engineering plans, because usually that'll be included in here besides the stream, the steep slope, the septic, you know, all that usually is included on here so we can tell how far away you are and somebody said, yep, he's that far and they stamped it, you know?
Well, I mean, the survey shows, if you look at the stream to the edge of my driveway, they have it roughly 205 feet.
Right. The wetlands go so far up from there also. There's a, the buffer is listed in there also and usually that line is, is on that, on that plan also.
Yeah.
And then like the location of the septic, like we were talking about with the first applicant. And I had spoke with your wife, it's behind the garage somewhere. Do we have an idea about how far? Because we know we got to be at least 10 feet.
I, I have a key drawn in on this one if you want to take a look at this one. It's, it seems what you have there, that it'll show you where the, where the fields are basically and the tank. Do you want to take a look at this one?
Bring it right on.
I think ours don't show that.
Here's your tank and then there's four that are 50 foot deep.
And you're 80 feet from that?
I think the 80 feet was from here to here. So depending, I mean, this could be jogged forward backwards to gain whatever distance I need from this, I guess this is your leader that comes down.
Yep, absolutely.
So depending on where the building goes, I can get 10 feet.
Right. Yeah, so, but basically that's what we're looking for, is somebody to put a stamp on it and say, that's where it's going, he has his 10 feet and you got the parcel access.
When was the house built?
That's an old one.
63.
Yeah. Fine, good luck finding anything on the septic on there.
The septic, I think, was built six or seven years ago.
Okay, so this is all the wetland, right? The green...
So these are some of the domes that they put in.
And then here's the terrain, steep.
Steep slope, right.
I have another question.
Yeah, because they, they offer a measure tool right here.
And I had Dan check on this, this map, this 2008.
This is the footage of the house.
On the side for an addition. We applied for a variance for that addition and never, it was too much money.
Okay, you, you're right.
I see that. I'm mistaken. It's a 2008 session, June of 2008. Is that correct? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes. And that's what we were looking at with Dan today and he says, I think they're under it. It looks like their math works out.
Sir, I have a question. You just, you just said this addition was not built.
I'm sorry, can we, can we, can we have the questions and the applicant have the microphone for the record, please?
Yeah, I mean, one thing you probably...
Sorry.
You know?
On the, on this map, there is an additional that says not built.
Yes, absolutely.
What is the actual square footage on your house?
Yeah.
What do you mean on the upper floor? How many floors is there? Not including the basement? So you have about a 1,200 square foot house?
The principal structure is 2,498 total.
What principal structure? He's saying it's 1,200. 1,200 square foot.
Yeah. And then the downstairs, you said it's an additional 1,000?
Yeah.
It's finished? It's a finished basement?
Oh, it's not?
This, this house is, I think, 24 by 40 or 42. Can you mention?
I am all for the big garages, especially detached, big car, car garages because you just never have enough space in the driveway. And, you know, we run into this problem a lot where everything's scaled off the, the main structure on the property. And three-car garage is not that much to ask for. But that being said, we could either...
So according to the assessor's card, it's 1840 square feet.
On the assessor's card. And we got on the application, what were we looking at?
2,498.
24.
That's the entire structure with unfinished basement and everything. Yeah.
Each floor.
So the house sits over a single car garage, right?
Yes.
Is that the other 600 car?
I mean, that's just the first, let's say first story, second story. It says full basement, so...
How did you come up with that number, 2,498? How did you come up with the 2,498 number?
I don't know where to come from. In what story are you modelled?
So on the application, the principal structure is 2,498 square feet. That had to have gone on your application.
And the assessor's rule saying 1840.
Maybe they added the addition to that because that doesn't add up.
Yeah.
Hold on. We may be looking at the wrong parcel on the assessor's rule. I'm sorry to tie you up like this.
No, I saw the house.
Yeah.
It's not 2,400 square feet. It's not, no. You're the house on the corner where the dog is barking outside?
No, that's my house.
1178.
My, my house is the one with the dog barking. So if what we're looking at is on this parcel is correct...
So that's probably at 1178.
Right, so the one level is 1178 and double would be how much? Give me 1178, 20.
2356.
You're in ballpark.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. Two level plus a garage, okay.
That's it.
You're fine, okay.
Sorry about that. It gets us all a little weary. That's all right. I almost showed up on Tuesday for this hearing. It wasn't for your wife telling me it's Thursday. So we have a couple ways we can go.
Yeah.
We can take a vote on it, make it conditional to a map that has the exact location of the field, the, the shed on the property. Or we can bring them back after they have it done and then vote on it.
With the, with the septic fields clearly...
Everything, yeah, because like he says, he can move 10 feet. He can move the shed a little bit either way to get his 10 feet, which makes a difference for us on where the sheds can be put, even though we know he can get it.
Yeah.
So we know he can get it, it's just we got to have an accurate recording that lays it out.
Yeah, there's a couple of things as we're discussing here. The first is to have a very accurate representation of where the structure is going to go. Secondly, an accurate representation of where the septic fields are so we can make a determination on how far you are from those. It could be on the complete other side of the property. We just need to be able to see it and make that determination. Right? Third, and I don't know how reasonable this could be, this data is from 2008. And again, I know land doesn't change much over, right, over hundreds and hundreds of years, land doesn't change much, but the, the, the property, you know, does and then homes and structures and other things are, that are built on there over the years. I know there's something you said here that's not built, but if you have anything a little bit more current than...
There's nothing more than $1,000 to have that done. So the only structure is there other than the house is the shed you can see from the road. That's the only structure on the property. There's no addition on the house, there's no...
And you're taking down the shed?
The shed, we're going to move temporarily until we get the garage and see.
Is the shed on cinder blocks? Is the shed on cinder blocks? What is it on?
It's a gravel pad and a blackboard or something.
So we're clear and then you, you know, so that everybody on the board and the applicant is clear. Two things that we would need would be an accurate representation of where the structure will go and secondly, an accurate representation of where the septic fields are on the property.
Okay, so what, what are you going to accept as far as the septic is? How do you want me to... receive that?
Oh, you said you just put in new fields. How many years ago?
You can see, you can see where it is just by standing in the yard. You can see where the pipes come through.
Well, who put in the field?
Um, I have to list names up.
Because they might be able to give you a record of that.
They'll have that record.
Where they put it. I mean, that shouldn't cost you.
It was basically a repair, I guess. So I'm not sure if there's going to be any people that... but you can tell if you're standing and you can see the difference in the yard. You can see the travel length of the yard. So it's, I don't know how much more accurate you can really be.
Maybe the thing to do would be to see what the building department wants and, you know, as far as what they would need. Because one of the issues too is as far as grading, you know, because of the stone mortar requirements and things like that. So I'm not sure exactly because of the, I mean, it's less than an acre of disturbance, so it doesn't have to be that great.
That's probably the easiest way to do it.
I think the easiest thing to do is, you know, yes.
Defer to the building department, okay.
Yeah.
So I think at this time, we're going to, to make it the easiest process for you folks, is we're going to defer to the building department and ask them exactly what they need because they could come back with something a little bit different than, you know, what we think. But the building department and the building inspector could come back, not could, will come back with a very exact line item of what you would need and what would be compliant in their eyes and what they would need to move this forward, okay?
If we get, we get to them within the next couple of days, let's say by, after Columbus Day.
We're closed on Monday.
Yeah, we'll have them shoot off the information that they'll need and I'm sure we'll know well within 30 days.
Easily.
Hold the public hearing part of it right now. We don't have to come back to that. We can give them a 30 day continuance and the building inspector will let us know what you need and she'll let you know. And we can bring you back in 30 days and put a motion on it. As long as they don't need anything in particular to it, we can put a motion to, you know, approve or not approve on the first, the first meeting next month.
We're the first Thursday of every month, first Thursday of every month. So I believe that's November 2nd. Yes. And we'll have an answer well before then from the building department in terms of what they need.
You'll have it too.
Yeah, yeah. When I say we, all of us collectively will have that answer. Any other questions from the board? Yeah. At this time, I want to make a motion to open the floor to public comment.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
If there are any members of the public that would like to come up and make a comment on this particular project, please feel free to do so.
All right, let's close that.
Okay, that was easy. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the floor to public comments. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, sorry to bring you back in a month, but hopefully the building inspector will say, okay, we'll go with this if they're willing to state X, whatever they can do to help you, you know, because I know the plans get expensive. It's one of the biggest reasons we have that people don't do improvements or, you know, additions because the plans are quite expensive to possibly be turned down. So if you can bear with us, we're going to try to help you through it.
So we're going to keep the discussion open until November the 2nd. Is that, is that sufficient time for you? Okay.
Yeah. We'll make sure she gets that.
And you report on three, so that's really the only issue.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. At this time, there are no further items on the docket. I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting. All in favor of closing the meeting?
Aye.
We're good. We're good. Thank you, folks, for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.